If I could have your attention for a moment, please. At this time, Lucinda Karstad is going to go over the SMART School Bond Act. It's the second presentation for this.
This is not part of the regular meeting.
This is not part of the regular meeting. Prior to the regular meeting, per regulation, I presented the whole Investment Act. Last month to the board, tonight, just getting a public hearing. I also had a lump where it was posted on the website. At this time, I have received no information, no inquiries. I have to report to the board. I am supposed to open something. If anybody had any questions or any comments about the SMART School Bond Act proposal that's been on the website. I don't think there's any questions. The board have any questions? Thank you. I don't think there's any questions. The board have any questions? Thank you.
Was that easier than you thought?
We will get started. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lucinda, who's got control? Who has control? You? I do right now? But I don't.
If I could take this moment for you guys, anybody to silence, any cell phones or any devices so we don't have any interruptions during the meeting?
Well, we're starting with...
Lucinda's already done that, so we would go to meeting.
Okay.
Lucinda's doing calisthenics here. One more minute.
Item two, number B, Camp Invention, Kelly LaRosa and students.
You'd have to show off the shirt, too. What lights? Lucinda, maybe the lights?
Good evening. I'm Anne Precious, secondary teacher here at the GLP School. And in the springtime, LaRosa approached me and I was interested in directing this program called Camp Invention. And after looking into the program, I absolutely agree this program that evening is hell. So, it got me thinking as I was coming here today about learning. So, I just want to take a little trip back in time to your education when you were a young child of this age.
It's a long time ago.
A long time ago, right? So, chances are, a teacher stood in front of you and you sat in her desk and you followed your teacher's directive, probably 95% of her day. And if she said, or he said, "I challenge you to make a duck." Chances are that she would have told you to make a mold for the body. Put a circle for its head. Make two triangles for a beak. Put an eye so it can see. Give it a wing so it can fly.
Cheryl's laughing. I think she remembers doing that.
I have it in my scrapbook. I don't know.
And two wings, two legs, so it can move. Did you have a lot of paper and pencil back in your day of learning?
Oh, she rocks.
Well, I applaud Kelly LaRosa because during Stat Development Day this past year, we were introduced to STEM as educators. STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. It's also called STEAM these days because they're getting art into it as well. So, I sat down, my first activity, I sat right down across from Mr. Sivoni, and he put a pile of Legos in front of me. He said, "Miss Precious, make a duck." And my first response was, "What kind of duck?" He just went back. "A duck." I said, "What color duck?" And Miss Precious, "Make a duck." And at that point, my mind opened, I had possibilities. Started choosing out left and right. And I had a whole time for 10 minutes, 45-year-old, to sit there and play with Legos to construct a duck. And I did it once, and I didn't like the wings, so I took it apart and I tried new wings. And I tried new wings, and it went ahead. This was my final product. It was a duck. It was my duck. I ownershiped this duck. I created this duck. Which of these activities empowered more learning? The paper or the legs? Who wants the paper? Who wants the Legos? Well, Camp Invention. Camp Invention, and here are our happy campers here to share with you today, allows children to explore a world that is going to be their oasis when they graduate from high school. Without further ado, without me being saying anymore, we have a slideshow to share. We did a Sarah Peterella, one of our instructors, put together so you can see exactly what Camp Invention has to offer. Creativity, check. Imagination, check. You have everything you need to reserve your mission spot in the launch program at Camp Invention. Inductate billionaire, take risks, make investments, and launch a business that will have your products flying off the shelves. Float, fling, and fly your way through high-energy air challenges in Habablast. As you airblast castle dragons, sling snowballs, launch rockets, build high-tech bubble blasters, and fling micro chickens. In Operation Keep Out, design and wire your own alarm box that sounds off when small hands try to sneak a peek at your most valued treasures. Store your rocket and land in a space lab in Mission Spacemakers, where you will grow plants and crystal trees and even hatch animals as you experiment with transforming an exoplanet for human habitation. Get ready and get set to launch. Only at Camp Invention, where big ideas become the next big thing. Get started at campinvention.org. And these are our even students participating in the program. Keep real brave. So, I brought with us today some happy campers who would like to take this opportunity to share with you their experience with Camp Invention. This is Lacy. And Lacy, would you like to share your words with board?
Good evening. My name is Lacy Porta. I had a super fun time at Camp Invention. My favorite module was Mission State. Because we made the way it's managed. The best part was making flowers from foam and straw. I learned that parents need ants because they laid up so that people can eat. I can't wait to do it next year. Thank you for caring about my learning.
Pretty. Um, my name is Lacey Gorch. Do you know what I did at Camp Invention about to make a bubble? The best part was testing it before I lost it. The first thing I did was watch the music. I'll always remember that if something does not work the first time you try it again, I can't refuse it next year. I hope you enjoyed that.
Hi, my name is Lucas Zanana. Camp Invention was amazingly fun. During Camp Invention, I made a spy box. I made a daughter puzzle, made a VCR, wanted to land a phone ship with the car. I won nothing always works the first time, so I've tried it again and again. Thank you for listening to my thoughts.
Good evening. My name is Darren Keldrick. I had a mind-blown time at Camp Invention. My favorite module was duct tape billionaire. The best part was everything, so I really want to go next year. I learned if something does not work the first time, to do it a different way. Thank you for caring about my learning.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Cole. I had a good time at Camp Invention. My favorite module was making the bubble gun. I had, the best part was creating with my friends. I learned how to make a rocket. Thank you for caring about my learning.
My name is Evan Shamara. Do you know what I did at Camp Invention? I had to play and explore with my mind. The best part about Camp Invention was making a bubble maker and a crystal tree. I'll always remember making the bubble gun and playing with my friends. I hope you enjoyed my thoughts about Camp Invention.
Very nice. Would you all mind just walking around so the board can see? That would be great. Have you made that gun?
How's your bubble gun?
Do I have the crystal tree? What'd you make it out of?
Lacy, come run over and show us. Show us what you have.
What you have?
So, you poured some stuff over it and it stuck?
Ooh, very beautiful.
You don't know, it looks like cotton candy. Yeah? Wow. It's kind of losing its leaves now for a while. So, when did you guys go to Camp Invention?
You made that?
That is so cool.
Was it during school or was it the summer?
We should do this during the school year, don't you think?
So, how long were you there?
That's so cool.
For like a bunch of days?
That is so cool.
A lot of days? Five days. So, was it like being at school or was it better than being?
Sounds good to me.
You'll be graduating soon.
Better than being at school or...
I'll bring the bubbles, okay? Nice job, man. Oh, you have it.
Laney, how's the bubble blast?
She shows both.
Oh, she's got a bubble one, too. Nice job.
Okay. So, what's that blowing out to make the bubbles go?
So, somebody tries to get in it?
So, it's like a little compressor gun?
Yeah.
That is really cool. Look at that. I like the way it lights up, too. Luke, what have you got here?
Those are gears. I know that.
Really cool. Those are awesome ideas. So, nobody can get into it, right? Do you have little brothers or sisters?
We've not met here. I'm having experience. Wow.
Yeah? You keep it together? So, when you pull the trigger, what actually happens in there? Uh-huh. But you know why they have spins? You know those loop in jars? Those are gears. That's what I do for a living. I sell gears. Yeah. I sell metal. Big ones.
Very nice. Very nice.
So, the spring's basically bringing it back to its original position, huh? So, imagine if you didn't have the spring here, what would you have to do each time to pull the trigger?
This is amazing.
Crystal tree. How did you make the crystals?
Why I didn't understand?
I like the color. It's awesome. So, you had a great time.
I could use one of them for my dog in the winter because he's white.
You need to pull it right.
They make it very nice.
You're gonna do a job on that shot, too.
Wow, that's pretty neat. Did you have a lot of fun there? Wish I could do it.
I know. That's what we do. Me, too. I'd like to make stuff like this. Do they have a camp like that for older people?
No.
Maybe. You don't know?
That's what we should do forever.
Maybe we should look, yeah. Yeah, the internet, too. I know. I'll have to look you up.
Yeah, but it's...
I probably could, yes.
Yeah, but isn't it more fun going and doing it instead of being on the internet, though?
It does. And what do the nails do?
We both timed out.
Okay.
I was just standing over there talking to her and saying, "Oh, it looks..."
What do you got, babe?
I think they timed out. Leave me the longer bag.
This is great. She did. Yes, Lacy did. Mine's the same thing, as far as...
Cool.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Right over here.
It's nails. Do you like filling them with stuff? Yeah, that's how you put it together. Oh, no kidding.
Good job, Anna.
And it lights up?
Nice job.
How come it lights up?
I don't know, really.
Okay. That's fair.
I think it only, like, lights up like when you...
I really like it.
Okay. Do you play with it a lot now? Do you have little brothers or some sisters? That's really nice.
Especially if you have a lick for a dog that's walking him at night. I mean, I have to move it. It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yep. So, let's get over. Would she wear that?
It's kind of strange for facial stuff.
I don't know. This is like we went to a time.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
So, that's your problem to solve. What would you like better, huh?
Exactly.
Good idea. Thank you. Thank you, Darren.
Darren, what did you make?
So, that's a duck, right? A platypus. It's in verb, huh? I remember that. Yeah. That'd be fun at these meetings.
Sure.
You could get in a lot of trouble.
So, is that all duct tape?
Ping pong balls. Be careful.
Oh, wow.
Wow, all out of duct tape.
You know, my father, he'd be like 89 if he was here. He would, he thought duct tape fixed everything.
Yeah. It only came in silver.
It only came in silver, but now it's all kinds of colors.
Ready, Darren? I'm gonna take a picture of you guys. You guys are gonna have to get a little bit narrow.
Do you want the towels in the back? Just take a step forward. One step forward.
That's better. Okay, we ready? On three, count.
Yeah, I gotta say platypus.
Ready? Platypus. See what part of that I hear there. Excellent. Thank you all for...
Nice job, guys.
Thank you, Emma.
I just made my day. Nice job, guys.
So much for throwing my VCR away that I'm thinking of doing.
My brother last Saturday after my parents passed away. Got real upset and goes, "Don't throw away the VCRs."
I think we need to have like a new recycling.
Do you need the computer?
Good evening. So much on the capitol project is very visual, like the field and where you guys have been doing tours. But Zanzalone and I were talking that there's quite a bit of tech going on. Now, it's visual, but we can give you just a little presentation of what's been going on with technology in the capitol project.
And it is so true because so much of it is behind the scenes until it doesn't work, right? And when it doesn't work, then, right?
Okay, so, if you can see this, there's these big schools, it's a thousand feet of cabling on each of those schools. I put in my presentation, miles and miles, I actually trust the numbers.
That's great.
For the district, for the project, they've ordered, and they're on site, 100,000 feet of these schools. Right now, currently in the elementary where they focus this summer, they've put in 56,000 feet and they're not done. So, it's hard to see. We caught them at work before they shove it up in the ceiling, but it feels like miles and miles of dead.
So, let me break into your presentation. Lucinda, I apologize. So, it was very interesting to me when I was talking to one of the contractors the other day when he was saying, "And the saddest part is the, help me, the fiber lines that were in the walls." So, in the last project, we thought we were being progressive. Can you just talk the talk on that?
The 2000 project besides the cabling, which they put like six drops in every room, they ran dark fiber thinking, "Well, maybe in the future you need it." We never needed it, so...
And now it's not even...
They're pulling that out. We don't need it in the future, so, yeah. But you never know. That project went to stand in 96. By the time it got through all the things in 98, in fact, it broke ground in the late 99.
But it just shows you how much everything's changed, too.
So, this is replacing, I say, line for line. But just so you're all aware, they used to have five drops in elementary, they had five student drops in the room and one drop for a teacher. We are going to be having the same amount of drops, but two of those drops out of the student stations are being pulled for our wireless project. Remember, the E-rate, all those E-rate wireless devices are sitting down in our basement as soon as they're all done installing this. Bosse's will be coming back and finishing that install, which will beef up our wireless. So, we have all that here. It's just these two projects are kind of going hand in hand. So, again, you can't see much. It's kind of all behind the walls and in the closets, and they're just pulling, pulling wire. And in the ceiling, there's one of our new wireless drops throughout the building. And I had to do this to show you. This is, we have two summer workers. Thank you very much. It was a Godsend this summer. We brought in over 1,000 pieces of equipment, which Kevin came up more to put in there. This is about, we figure about a little over 400 empty Chromebook boxes that they've stacked it all up. So, all the wiring is going in the elementary school, is making it so that we can move forward with the SMART School Bond and be able to run the pilot at the elementary school this fall. The carts are here, finally, yay, this week. The devices are here. They're ready to go. We actually had to commandeer two rooms for a while here in the high school because we had so much equipment, we didn't have any place to manage it and get it processed. The third through fifth graders will have the same pilot that the GLP had last year, where one teacher will fully integrate it for the year. The rest of the grade will have 10, I had, or Chromebooks to have for the year. The sixth grade, because the pricing came in so well, I worked with Mrs. LaRosa, and the sixth grade will go one-to-one. They will all have devices this year.
Wow.
And in addition, our original plan was that in the seventh and eighth grade, like, the two ELA teachers would share a lab. Again, the prices came in almost less than half of what we quoted in the project. So, our junior high school, our seventh and eighth graders will also go full one-to-one this year. So, thank you very much for supporting us. Again, a lot of exciting technology, and the kids are gonna start to see it and the teachers are gonna start to see it, which is very exciting because it isn't all hiding in the walls come fall. So, any questions?
Goodness, where do you start?
So, last Wednesday at our retreat, Jack kind of made a wrong turn and we kind of...
Got lost?
Got lost in the elementary for a little bit. We did see a bunch of wire, so it was, we saw the racks and all that other stuff.
All new racks. All the air conditioning is gonna be air conditioning, so it's really impressive.
Jack, did you make a wrong turn on purpose?
It's kind of a self-guided tour.
Yeah.
It's a little dangerous in the elementary school right now with so much things up all the way, so... Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Lucinda. So, before you leave, what's the next step?
The next step? They were finishing up with the...
And then it's tax warrant.
There's two next steps. One is, and this is where it's a joint process. A joint process. The next step is literally the wiring closets at the elementary school are to the point where the Capitol Project electrical contractor is going to turn it back over to Bosse's starting next Monday. Our Bosse's tech will be coming in and literally swapping the switches into the new closets so that the elementary school will have phones and computers in the fall. Otherwise, they would not have this. So, that's our next big step, our big push next week. After that, there's some finishing up that they have to do at the elementary school for the wiring, but then they are moving on to the high school up here. We've got a whole new server room to build. We needed to expand and move to the server room because, remember, the SMART School Bond that you're gonna approve right now is for security and we will be bringing the digital security system into this district. So, we need to, outsourcing it, so we need to be able to have a bigger server room to handle that, additional technology. And once they kind of get done here, they're moving to the GLP and they're putting all the wiring in there, which I'm really excited about because in the 2000 project, and I had just moved back to the district, so, trust me, I went to the first meeting on it and I was kind of shocked because one of the things they decided to drop at the last minute was, "We don't need to put wiring in technology." No one's gonna remember this. Trust me, I went to the first meeting on it, I was kind of shocked, because one of the things they decided to drop at the last minute was, we don't need to put wiring in technology, no one's gonna remember this. And the GLP, they're little kids, they don't need it. And so the GLP was left off the two thousand project. So I'm really excited that this spring and next summer, we'll be basically bringing.
They're the first ones to go on.
The GLP up to some, so.
Were there any big surprises over the summer that you found?
Not really.
Good.
I think having them cut the phone lines for our residency line twice was a surprise.
So what we've, what I've learned in this Capitol Project is that there's something called as-is drawings, which are different than what's on a blueprint. And so years ago, I mean, our elementary school was built in nineteen thirty-nine, and a lot of the projects that happened after that just never landed on a piece of paper anywhere. So when the excavators come through, they find abandoned septic tanks, they find power lines, they, the power to the digital sign.
That was a funny story that I brought up at a meeting, I said, you know, we lost the digital sign about two weeks ago, and I'm pretty sure I checked all of our tech ends. If it was on my end, it was just something, you know, be that fuzzy stamp, thinking, it looks dead. And so they did some research, and I came to the next meeting, and I said, we still don't have the digital sign. He goes, yeah, they did turn it off at the breaker, because it's tied to where they're doing all the work in the foyer, but then the next day they dug it up. So they're assuring me that it'll be up this week, so that I can have it back out in front of Star School. But, yeah, that was another.
So we're pretty sure we know where the septic tanks are, the sanitary lines, the electric lines, because we cut that, too, right? So we're hoping by the time we get finished with this and get the sidewalks laid this week, that we will have proper drawings, especially at that building. And then we'll start all over, right?
So next question, so it sounds like we're internally getting ready for it. Do we have the trunk coming into the school district or in the Eden that can handle all this?
Yes, we have broadband through, we rent through OSCE's, which is, we sell from a time warp, so yes, we have it. And OSCE's is always.
So Eden's can be able to handle.
Yeah.
And the only reason why I ask, I mean, I just noticed lately my, my internet's been brutal.
We're sucking it all out of your house.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I'm asking, I'm wondering that question, because I'll run, I'll run a broadband test, and I'm not getting near to what I'm supposed to be getting right now.
This is part of when you have to vote on your OSCE's budget later, that we pay in part to be part of the consortium for them to enlarge their infrastructure?
Well, I'm just wondering if there's enough, enough trunk coming in the Eden.
I wonder if it anything to do with time warp and moving over to Spectrum for you. I mean, I know what street you live on, okay? When I drive down Jennings, I go dead. So WePAC's can't be much better, you know?
It sure, so it comes down from Chedey.
Which is the other way down.
End of the school view, so I know that we have a main feed.
Okay.
Now, good question.
What do you expect the wireless capacity up near the concession stand on the football field? Will we have reception, wireless reception up there?
We have to talk about that. I'm having drops put in, but we have to, OSCE's can't touch that, and E-rate can't touch that, because it's not educational. So we have to, we'll have to adjust that probably near the end of the project. So I made sure we got the drops, which will tie into our same system.
So once you have that, then what would be the capacity?
It'll be the same as here in the school. So again, it'll be as helpful as they can get to the units where we put it. I have some, I have one in the concession stand right now. We don't have any heat really in the fieldhouse, because there was really nothing being done there, but I'm working on that one.
And so when the, when the project's done, meaning the project done next.
Summer.
Year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What do you consider the fieldhouse?
The press boxes.
Okay.
Yeah, that. Otherwise, I don't have anything else out there, so. There's wireless devices that we could look into to beef it up, so. A bridge or something, so.
It just couldn't be part of E-rate?
It can't be.
And it couldn't be part of Smart Schools?
Right.
Or it could be wired.
Or it could be wired, yeah.
Which would be a, a simple fix. Just plug it on wireless router of some kind.
We just have to figure that one out, so.
Okay.
Okay, questions?
The reason I ask is we're looking at point-of-sale systems to make it very, very simple for untrained volunteers to work at the concession stand. So instead of having to memorize the price of popcorn, simply press the popcorn button, and the price will load, it'll be a very, very swift system. And part of the benefit, if, if we can use it wirelessly and be connected, then it has many benefits.
I think we will have no problem with the concession stand, I'm concerned about the press box, I think if we've got a concession stand, we'll be okay.
Okay.
Good test?
Good test.
When?
When for what?
When to test it? Next summer or before?
Yeah, I'm not sure, yeah. I have to see, it could be this fall, I don't know if they've run the wiring, so then we have to see if we, we have to still get the devices, because I could eliminate it, but.
Okay, good to know. Thank you, Lucinda. I can wake it up, maybe. Mrs. Karstedt, do you see what I see up on the screen? What doesn't it want? The special password.
I need something. It doesn't want.
Gonna be able to do it asleep though.
But you won't get, that's fine.
Because I just have to get it on my mouse.
They have to come in. Thank you.
No, that's the easy way out.
So. Who's reading?
I can read, okay.
You're rolling now.
You're up to, I apologize for my tardiness.
You're up to E. D, we're not doing D.
We're not doing D?
Not doing D.
So E, the tax warrant? Laura Feldman?
You're on Laura.
All right.
You just have to speak right into it, I think the mics are super, just hook you up, thank you, right?
Not yet, but we can hook in if I, well, I need my computer, though, not. Okay. The tax warrant, we're, the plan for today is to schedule the levy amount adopted by the board, so that we can have a rate per thousand to go out to the taxpayers for the amount that was approved in the May budget referendum. And the recommendation I'm making to the board is that we would go out for the entire levy amount that we had planned in May. And in your board packet, you had the different tax rates for the different municipalities. And tomorrow, they will print our tax bills if the board adopts the levy amounts recommended.
Yeah, she's got two more.
Do you want to just take a moment just to read that?
Yes, thank you. The total levy to be raised by taxes will be fourteen million two seventy-five, two hundred seventy-five thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars. Each town has its own equalization rate, and what that is, is just the state's attempt to say that housing is more expensive in one part of the state than the other, to bring everybody down to, in the district, and as if their house were all assessed at the same amount, so the actual tax rates vary because of the equalization rates. So the town of Boston's tax rate will be twenty-two oh six per thousand. Concord will be forty-six eighty-two per thousand, Eden will be thirty forty-seven. Evans will be twenty-two dollars and six cents, and North Calons will be twenty-three dollars and thirteen cents. Can you just back up for a minute and say, where do those rates come from? What happens is, the entire levy amount, the fourteen million two seventy-five, gets divided based on the property values in each town. And then that calculation drives down using equalization rates for what percentage of the whole that each community gets. And then their total amount that they're due of their assessment gets divided into the levy, and that gives you the different rates. That's where the equalization rates, and equalization rates help a district like ours, because perhaps your town hasn't been reassessed in a long time, but properties are selling for more. And if they didn't have an equalization rate, the people who bought new houses would be paying all the tax bills, and all the, and the people that have been living forever would not be carrying their fair share of the tax lobby. So that's the whole purpose behind the equalization rates that the state has designed. Questions, anybody? So you'll be voting on that motion later in the board meeting? And at this point, with the retirement of our county's payable clerk, my coming into the district new, the move of the district office from the high school over to Eden Elementary into temporary offices, we're still waiting for the final numbers to give you for the fund balance and reserve entries for any surplus from this year's operations, from the sixteen seventeen results of operations. Because of those factors, we're not completely where we should, nor typically are this time of year. By now, typically, we have solid numbers for you, we know that there's very little chance they're gonna change in the audit. And because of all the changes that are going on, we've had issues with power outages, lack of bathroom facilities due to the Capitol Project. So we're gonna ask your indulgence till the next board meeting, so that we can give you solid numbers, rather than have to change them and ask for, you know, something that might not be less than perfect. So we wanna wait, and we're gonna actually have the audited numbers this year. Next year, we plan to go back to the regular timeframe, and I beg your indulgence for this year for the issues. So, let me ask you a question, could you get together with the Finance and Audit Committee prior to the September board meeting, so that they could see that? Yes, that is the, my, my hope is to set up a meeting with the Audit Finance Committee, so that we can discuss it, so that I can make recommendations, and there can be some input, so that it's not just where I think it should go, it's where this board feels it's best utilized for future planning of the district. And my second question is, how does this affect you with the auditors coming in next week? Or has it nothing to do with it at all? What you're doing now, does it have anything to do with the auditors coming in next week, or they completely separate? When the auditors come in next week, they will finalize all the numbers, they will be doing a verification, making sure that everything is correct, and there are no material errors or omissions in the financial statements. They will be able to give us concrete numbers that will match to Mary's, and she will have everything ready for them to be on site Monday morning. Okay, and then will the auditors come to the September board meeting to present, or no? That is my plan, I have not yet spoken to them with being new, but my plan is that they should be coming in and they should presenting to you, so you can ask questions of them directly, so that they will just tell you the, overall, the results of operations and how things have gone. They will meet more in depth with the Audit Committee than with the full board. Okay, so do you think that they'll meet with the Audit and Finance Committee right before the board meeting? Is that? That would be my recommendation, because I'm trying to be cognizant of the time that the board members are donating to the district. Your volunteers elected to serve the community, and I'm trying to make it so that you're not spending many nights away from your family. So the plan would be to invite the auditors to come to the Audit Finance Committee at six o'clock, and then the board meeting at seven. So that's Jack, Paul, and Don, if you're available in September at six. I will confirm with an email once I meet with the auditors on Monday. That will be one of the first things we're gonna set up, so that you can set your calendar, so that you know what time you have to be at the district. Cool. Okay. So I'll take that back. Do you need to do that, or no? I would like to do this right now, just to go over a big overall of what our reserves are, what my goals are for the district in developing, and having the board eventually adopt a formalized reserve plan. I want the public to understand that when there are surpluses in the budget, which is a good thing, that it's not just being put away like misers, there are plans for it for the future, for catastrophic or economic downturns, and so in explaining some of the reserves we have, and the process we would utilize to develop a reserve plan, I just wanna take five or 10 minutes of your time, and kind of just give everyone a very brief thousand-foot overview of what the plan is to develop this reserve plan for the Eden School District. So we're gonna talk about long-term financial planning, the current reserves, the reserves to facilitate, facilitate the long-term financial planning, and the process of actually developing a reserve plan. Once we have a reserve plan in place, typically what happens is the Audit Finance Committee reviews it once a year, changes are made, and then it's re-adopted with those changes. So this is meant to be, once we've established it, a living document that will continue on through the history of the district, so that in the past twenty years ago, districts planned for the next year based on what they needed. We know we've come through the most significant fiscal crisis ever in school district history. We need to plan for the long term, so that when there is a catastrophic or economic downturn, we can keep those realities away from the students as long as possible, giving them the best and most solid foundation for education that we can. So this is just the definition, and basically, long-term financial planning is planning more than a year ahead. It's very important in any business, and although our school district is a public government, it is a business. And its goal is not turning out widgets, it's turning the minds on to students to be lifelong learners, so that they can become productive members of our community, so that our government, our country, our personal lives continue in the great condition, the best condition we can be in. So some of the reasons you want reserves is you wanna save for fiscal instabilities. You can sustain periods of economic downturn. This district, along with districts all across New York State, utilized their reserves in the past six years to cover things like, as you've heard, the gap elimination adjustment, reductions in state aid that occurred because the state didn't have enough money to give to school districts. The students were able to continue on with their education in the best manner possible, because reserves were in place to help cover those rough periods. Much the same as in your home, and if you think about it, when you're looking at, your child goes to work for the first time, you tell your child, save some of your paycheck in case something goes wrong. Well, typically, parents tell their students, their children to save a percentage of their money in case something goes wrong. New York State allows school districts to save a percentage of their money with no plan, in case something goes wrong, at the rate of four percent. So think about it. Think about your household expenses and trying to cover them if there were a loss of your job or loss of part of your wages with just four percent in savings. The New York State realized this was not in the best interest of schools, so they developed reserves that we could use for specific items to save money to tide us through the difficult economic times. So some of the districts, such as our bus capital and our capital improvement and a technology reserve, those would help for things that you could go out for bond for, to cover the local share that the state aid doesn't cover. And the other thing is, when you can prove that you're not utilizing every penny you're getting, just like when you go to the bank for a mortgage, we get better bond rates if we have secure investment plans. So that's, these are the main reasons that we need a reserve plan, that we can show to the public, we can have on our website, that the rating companies can see when we go out for bonding. So again, we're saving for future planned expenditures by the use of the capital reserve, we have a building reserve, and we have an equipment and bus reserve. We have an employee benefit accrued liability reserve, which is for things like carried-over sick time, carried-over vacation time when someone leaves the district, so that the money has been set aside in advance, so that we don't have to pull that out of each year's budget, because taxpayers don't wanna see their tax bills going up and down all the time, they want them level. So if you get a major retirement, this helps, because we take the money out of the savings to spend. And then there's a retirement contribution reserve, which is for, as it says, ERS, which is the Employee Retirement System, that's for all of your support staff. It is not for your teaching-certificated staff, it's just for your support staff. So a very small amount of our retirement contribution that we're mandated to send to the state, we can set some money aside in a reserve to pay for that. When we have a surplus, we can put it in the surplus for years when we need to borrow, use it. So the other reason that we have reserves is to pay, save for unplanned expenditures, much. to pay, save for unplanned expenditures, much like you would save for, if your car's going to break down, or you lose your job, we have an employment reserve, because the district pays 100% of unemployment. We're self-insured for unemployment. And then, we have a repair reserve for the co-gen, and that allows us to put some funds aside, so that when it breaks down, we can simply go, we can do one of two things. We can borrow from that reserve and pay it back within two years, or we can have a public hearing, much like we just did for the Smart Schools Bond Act, and then we can, the board can vote and authorize the use of those reserves. So, again, reserves are for the planned and unplanned expenditures that we will have. This is just kind of telling you that the purposes of the reserves, unemployment is to cover the cost for New York State unemployment, because we're self-insured. Retirement contribution is for the Employee Retirement System, and the ABLR, as I explained, was for retirement, things such as accrued sick time and/or vacation time. The repair reserve I explained, um, capital reserve, that, that helps with the local share, so that you can go out and not have such an impact on your tax levy every time you need to do repairs on the district. And a vehicle reserve plan was set up astutely by this district to help pay for the bus purchases, to keep on a good replacement cycle. Are there any questions about the reserves that we have? So, what are the plans going forward? How are we going to get this reserve plan? Well, I planned and have begun to meet with the board, talk with board members, the Audit Committee I will be talking with and Superintendent, to find out the risk tolerance, how much you feel is comfortable that needs to be set aside for seen and unforeseen issues. I will be researching new reserves that I will bring to you through the Audit Committee first, to be adapted and put into place to make a solid reserve plan. I will develop the reserve plan with the input and the help of the Superintendent and the Finance Committee, and then this board will adopt a reserve plan, once you're comfortable with the plan that has been presented to you. And as I said, annually, it will be updated, and it will become a living document for our district. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you.
We're still up.
Food service.
Food service.
Yes. And I still haven't found where I find the documents to grab before I run to the meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, I, so I'm still trying to find between the filing cabinet, the physical ones and the ones in the computer, where everything exists. So, we had a bid opening last Thursday, I believe it was, for the food service contract. We had advertised the bid, we had sent out the processes, SED approves our bid documentation, then we send it out, we sent letters to four vendors, and the recipient of the food service bid, the winner was, once again, Personal Touch. They will give, provide our food services, and right now, they're projecting a small surplus of about $17,000 at the end of the 1718 school year with their bid that they have presented.
So, we, we sent out four requests for proposals, and we, three chose not to?
That's correct. We only had one that filed.
In your experience, is that, is that typical, or do they just not want to compete because this, this group has had the contract for a period of time?
I think sometimes it becomes a staffing issue, and with the unemployment, or the employment minimum wage being so high, they're having harder and harder times staffing. So, I think they're looking less to expand right now, until that settles down, would be my guess.
Who's they?
The other bids.
The other vendors.
The other vendors that have not bid. Um, we did send out, we did get the list from SED of the four in the area. They said typically, we wouldn't be expected to see them. I'll be honest, this is the first district where we bid this food service, but when I spoke with SED, they said that it was very common, that you might only get one vendor, that one or two vendors.
And I'm guessing we're glad we got one, right? At that point, yeah, because otherwise, otherwise Sandy will be cooking.
Cooking. I have only cooked five times in 32 years for my husband, so that would be a problem.
Oh, that wouldn't be good, because I couldn't help, or my husband cooks too.
He's a cook. That's right. So, you're good? Everybody's okay on all that? All right.
Um, request to withdraw specific items from consensus items. Anyone? Okay. Item four, routine actions, approval of consensus items. Recommended motion that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the Administrative Memorandum A through N.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
All right. This is the time that the board has designated to receive, to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements and respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate the representation's status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, there is a two-minute time limit.
Going once. Oh, yay. Hi, Colleen.
Hello. My name's Colleen, I'm a Cal, um, Eden graduate, a senior, incoming senior to incoming seventh grader. Um, and usually I was supporting, because I've heard a lot of concerns. Um, I actually, my daughter brought her schedule home, and she was scheduled for three and four study halls for this year, which was a concern.
What grade?
She's a senior.
Okay.
Um, so I was very proud of her, because she heard of the schedule and brought it to us before. Usually I look at it, but I haven't had a chance to look at it. Um, so that concerned us, that there's three and four study halls, plus a lunch period, which made four and five out of nine periods a day of uninstructional time, which we don't feel appropriate or exceptional. Um, she did go today. She advocated for herself, and said, you know, I don't want three or four study halls. Um, she was told, for the first two study halls of the day, well, why don't you just come for the first couple weeks, if you find that you don't eat all that time for work, then just come into school late, which, as parents said, is very concerning. Um, and I do believe this is a practice for a lot of, especially seniors, which I don't know if that's policy or not, but I'd rather my child be in school unsupervised, than to be up, and she doesn't have a car, so she'd have to walk to school. So, that was a concern also. Um, and her friend was there, so she did confirm that this was set. My husband, what? Another concern was she was told, um, with the custom teachers, that's when you get, you get no electives, which I do believe that, because there aren't any electives who are listed today. Um, she did go in, and she was able to manipulate the schedule a little bit. Um, there's a couple of periods, she's still going to have three study halls in her spring semester. Um, the only option for her was to go over to cross sports, which, you know, I don't think that she should have to take that, if that's not in her interest or health, which she has already taken. So, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that it does happen. I, this just happened today, so I did take the appropriate steps and contacted the guidance office, which I, you know, I will work with them to follow up with them, and I will also follow up with administrators, but they weren't available until after Monday. But I feel it's important enough for you to know that this really is happening, that these kids are, you know, like five parents, they talked to their kids, had two study halls, so.
May I just ask a clarifying question? When you say two study halls, are you talking about a, a study hall that happens every other day, or a study hall that happens every day?
She said I could share her thing with you. She's not at the top of the jury yet. She doesn't want them in the study halls. Or you can, you can keep that past.
Can I really? You don't mind?
No.
I, I, you know, I'll just look it up, though. Forget it.
I do feel.
Oh, you take it back, Colleen. I'll take it up.
Teachers, you know, we're not able to provide electives for these kids who are the average student. I know that's what brought up a lot of meetings. Um, she's not an AP student, although she's going to be a hack of a college student. She's going to be a very productive citizen in this world, but she should be able to have some options. Maybe she will be a good potter, or maybe she would be a good gardener, or maybe she needs gourmet foods, you know, or, you know, to learn how to use a washing machine, or handle a checkbook. Um, I know there's a lot of AP courses and stuff, but I feel like our average student is being left out. And to me, five periods out of nine, why would I even send her to school? Not that I want homeschooling, like teachers, but, so thank you for, you can always email me or call me if you have any concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Item five, new business resignations. Number one, accept the resignation, that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the resignation of long-term substitute school counselor Julie Levitt be accepted effective July 25, 2017.
Second. Discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item two, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the resignation of microcomputer repair technician Daniel Berman be accepted effective August 2, 2017. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mr. Berman for his 15 years of service to the district.
Second. Questions? All in favor?
One second. This one, discussion. I'll do that. Um, you'll see Dan around, though. So, Dan accepted a position as a senior tech with Bosse's, and then got assigned back to our district, so we're pretty excited about that. So, you'll see him around, so don't be confused and think you're seeing a ghost. Um, his, his job description is different, and he's not working on what he was working on before, but he still is here.
Well, that's nice, because he's familiar with the district and the staff.
Oh, my gosh, we are thrilled. Lucinda and I were just saying today what an exciting time this is in the Technology Department, because the board has approved a third microcomputer tech, which we have not had in years. So, we have Kathy, Kevin, and Tebra, and then, while Dan resigning, we also have him back to work on things that have to do with our server in such a critical time with all, with everything coming in. So, it is, it's just a super positive and exciting time for the Technology Department.
You're right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item three, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the resignation of school counselor Tammy Orcutt be accepted effective July 21, 2017. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mrs. Orcutt for her 15 and a half years of service to the district.
Second. Any questions or discussion?
I'd just say that Tammy is very happy down in Florida, and has invited you to visit if you choose. Uh, the weather's great, she's with her husband, and she has a full-time job, so she's very happy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item four, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the resignation of cafeteria monitor Deanne Glendening be accepted effective July 27, 2017, in order to accept the position of licensed practical nurse.
Second. Any questions or discussions?
So, Deanne is sitting here, so you can say goodbye to her for a couple of minutes, pending a motion later. Uh, Deanne has been an incredible asset to the cafeteria. Her office will be all over the district, should you choose to accept her as an LPN, but the cafeteria won't be the same without you, Deanne. That I know for sure. If you miss her, though, you can always go down to Bray Miller's. That's where I see her.
On Saturdays.
Okay, only on Saturdays now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, uh, motion carried.
Item five, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the resignation of bus driver Maureen Pie be accepted effective August 1, 2017. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mrs. Pie for her 10 years of service to the district.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
That's Ray new here, by the way. Is that Ray, or is that?
Power tool.
That's a power tool, yeah.
Oh, good. Okay. Okay. All right. B, appointments. All appointments will not be effective in service to the district pursuant thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting certification and clearance for employment. Here are the recommended motions. Number one, appoint special education teacher, that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, Kristy Height, who is professionally certified in students with disabilities B through two and one through six, and childhood education B through two and one through six, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the special education tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September 1, 2017, and ending August 31, 2021, unless extended, in accordance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section 312 of Education Law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to Section 312D of the Education Law of either effective or highly effective in at least three of four preceding years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. Salary is based upon ETA contract master step two.
Second. Discussions or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Point school counselor, that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, Shannon Henigan, who is permanently certified as a school counselor, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in, in the guidance counselor tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September 1, 2017, and ending on August 31, 2021, unless extended in accordance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section 312 of the Education Law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to Section 312D of the Education Law of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. Salary is based upon ETA contract master step one.
Second. Discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item three, appoint part-time clerk typist, that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, Mary Granger be appointed as a part-time clerk typist, 19 hours per week, effective September 5, 2017. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level five, step one.
Second. Questions or discussion?
Mary's here. Right? Just wave your hand, so they know who you are. Mary spent time at GLP in the spring, and the kids loved having her, and we're thrilled to get her back. She is a part-time clerical at GLP, which puts Sherry Stevens full-time back at the bus garage, or almost full-time at the bus garage.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
To welcome Mary. Congratulations.
Item four, appoint part-time business teacher, that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, Jeffrey Pierzante, who is professionally certified in childhood education one through six, and business and marketing, be appointed as a point six FTE part-time business teacher, effective September 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018. Salary is based upon ETA contract master step one.
Second. Questions or discussion?
Jeffrey is here as well. He's in the back, so they can see what you look like.
Congratulations.
They haven't voted on you yet. So, you want to hold on that.
Actually, Jeff, do you remember me from, oh, Baker Road? Cheryl? Jeff is a great guy. He worked at Baker Road Alternative. Uh, he started out as a TA, trying to get his foot through the door to get into teaching, and he did a great job with very tough kids, so he'll be a great asset to the school.
Nice to know.
Good to see you again.
Nice to see you, too.
Other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Congratulations, Jeff. Now you can say thank you.
Item five, appoint part-time science teacher, that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, Emma Verdi-Corte, did I say that correctly?
So, to save you a couple of breaths, she resigned this morning, accepted a full-time position in Buffalo.
Okay.
So, we'll withdraw number five.
Let's just break over, sorry. Item six, appoint registered professional nurse, that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, Stefania Cooper, who is registered professional, who is a registered professional nurse, be appointed on probation as a school nurse, effective September 5, 2017, through March 4, 2018. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level 13, step one.
Second. Discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
So, if I could just interrupt, Stefania couldn't be here tonight. I believe she's on her honeymoon. Am I right? Do you know? I'm not sure about that, but you would I'm not sure about that, but you would know her as Darlene Smith's daughter. Okay.
What, missed this for a honeymoon? Come on.
I think I'm right about that honeymoon, right? So, I'm moving on. Item seven, appoint licensed practical nurse that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Deanne Glendening, who is a licensed practical nurse, be appointed on probation as a school nurse, effective September 5, 2017, through March 4, 2018. Salary is based upon CSE contract level 10, step five.
Second, discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Congratulations, Deanne.
When I used to go have lunch with my sister's kids, who are in their 20s now, at GLP, you were in the cafeteria.
So, Deanne will be floating all over the district. While we have students who are on a school bus, in some cases with special needs that need an RN, Deanne will then take over the offices. This was a request by parents last year to not leave our nurses' office unmanned while our nurses were on the bus. So, this is one of the extra positions that the board approved for the budget this year. So, we're thrilled to have Deanne. Congratulations.
But Deanne, she should be full-time.
She is full-time. She just can't be on the bus with the students, so she'll be floating through all of the offices when the RNs are on the bus. And lunches, too.
Oh, perfect.
Right, or if they're out for the day. She'll be... She's not going to know where she's supposed to be.
And you have to kind of flex that.
So, she's the perfect person for the job. We're thrilled to have her here.
And as an RN, working with her, she's phenomenal.
Good to know.
Thank you, congratulations.
Okay, item eight, appoint microcomputer repair technician that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kevin Lex, be appointed on probation as a microcomputer repair technician, effective August 2nd, 2017, through February 1, 2018. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level nine, step one.
Second, discussion or questions?
Just so you notice that it's a retroactive date, because you've given me authority over the summer to send you information over the summer, and he's been working very hard, even tonight, so we're thrilled that he's here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item nine, appoint cafeteria monitor that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Toni Marie and Sweeney be appointed on probation as a cafeteria monitor, effective September 5, 2017, through March 4, 2018, sorry. Salary is based upon CSE contract level one, step one.
Second, questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item 10, appoint extended leave substitute teacher that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kelly Beller, who is certified in childhood education 1 through 6 and students with disabilities 1 through 6, be appointed as an extended leave substitute teacher, replacing Mrs. Katie Musso, effective September 5, 2017, through approximately December 4, 2017, or upon the return of Mrs. Musso. Salary is $95 per day.
Second, questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
So, I want to apologize ahead of time on this one, that it does have a typo. They were all in Barb's binder. Well, I was able to fix my own. It's your name that's misspelled, as you know, so we will fix that for you, Mrs. Kindly. Barb is out tonight. Her father did pass away this morning, and so my apologies on the misspelling for Alan, but I want you to have this in front of you. Do you have an extra? I'll take it. So, item 11, appoint board committees that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the board committees for the 2017-18 school year be appointed as follows. So, we're... Am I reading the liaisons and all of that? Is this what I'm going through here? You could say, "Is it's on the sheet." Oh, just say, "Is on the sheet." Fine. Perfect.
Does anybody have any problems?
I'm just glad I'm not on every committee. Thank you.
It was tough.
Yep, Jen missed the workshop, so it was tough, Jen.
Second, any other questions or comments on this?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
All right, item C, approve Pell placement that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Philip Archibald, shall remain on the preferred eligible list in the tenure area of science for a period of seven years computed from June 30th, 2017, to the effective date of the reduction.
Second, questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item D, approve Pell placement that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Amy McConaughey-Witman, shall remain on the preferred eligible list in the tenure area of art for a period of seven years computed from June 30th, 2017, the effective date of the reduction.
Second, questions or comments?
Is that position posted right now?
The art one?
Yeah.
Actually, there's more than one posted. So, there's the science from the teacher that resigned this morning. There's the art.
Someone asked me about art today and...
Tell them to send their things in.
We had interviews with you.
I'm sorry, Kathy?
We had interviews on Monday.
So, they had interviews on Monday, so you're saying it closed?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess it's closed. Okay. Thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item E, approve increase in hours that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kathy Jeffers be increased from .6 to .63 FTE music teacher, effective September 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018.
Second, questions or comments?
Just that this is very typical in the summer, that you'll see some of these part-time positions change as the master schedules are finalized, and most of it has to do with a complicated schedule or traveling. And so, this extra piece for her is really just more to do with the master scheduling at GLP.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item F, approve security for Smart Schools Bond that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the final copy of the Smart School Investment Plan be approved as presented.
Second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Thank you, everybody, on that one. Thank you for your work, Lucinda, on that. Kind of a scramble, I know. Excuse me. Item G, approve merger with Lake Shore for Boys Golf that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Eden Boys Golf Team be combined with Lake Shore Boys Golf Team for the 2017-18 school year.
Second, any questions or discussion?
This was a last-minute request from Lake Shore, because they didn't have enough to field their own team.
Any idea if it will reduce the opportunity for any of the Eden kids?
Oh, no. They're only bringing two or three students forward to us.
Oh, so we'll be...
Or the whole school.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item H, adopt tax levy rate that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the tax levy for the 2017-18 school year in the amount of $14,275,945 be approved, which establishes the tax rate per thousand as follows. Which can be seen on the board.
Yep. Second, discussion or questions? All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. We're skipping "aye." Good practice.
I am, like, so out of it, too. Sorry.
Skipping "aye."
"Aye," whatever. Or skipping "aye." Okay. Gotcha. All right, so I'm moving on to J. Approve transportation rates that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following rates be set for outside organizations or other non-traditional transportation routes. Bus driver, 37.13 per hour. Bus attendant, 31.35 per hour. Mileage rate, 82 cents per mile.
Second, questions or discussions?
When they say mileage rate, what do they mean?
The mileage rate is what it costs per mile for the actual bus.
Oh, okay.
It is not the wages, it is the bus. That's why the wages for the monitor and the driver are separate.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's their hourly rate for the...
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item K, accept food service bill that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a bid in the amount of $331,666.25 from personal touch food service be accepted.
Second, questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item L, approve district code of conduct that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2017-18 district code of conduct be approved.
Second, questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item B, approve corrective action plan that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the corrective action plan resulting from the state comptroller's audit be approved.
Second, questions or discussion?
So, I would say to you that the only reason that this is on here is because we received a request from the state comptroller's audit to submit a correction action plan, but Tom and I had done that in the spring, and Laura explained to me that it was the format of our submission in the spring that they weren't accepting. So, we had to change the format, even though it looks pretty much the same to me, for them to accept it, and then they did. So, thank you for explaining that, Laura. But if you remember, they focused on payroll for us and found no significant findings, and we're very thrilled to say that Pat Hawkins does a great job.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item N, accept donation of banner that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the tower banner valued at $175 be accepted from Evenhouse Printing for use in the Eden Central School District display at the annual corn festival.
Second, any questions or discussion?
It was great. It was on the... It was... A lot of people really made comments about it. It was vinyl, which is good, because we noticed that all the water that was coming through the hole in the top of the ag tent was coming straight onto our table. So, I'm very glad that we didn't take the one that she donated three months ago. That was made much more of that corrugated cardboard, and so I'm really thrilled she donated this for us. It's very nice. It was wet, very wet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item O, approve accessing of state safe that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the business office safe asset tag number A00068044, serial number 1Z1830 be accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second, this is something we can put up for auction, correct?
Yes. The issue was, the safe was very, very old. It was going to require to be moved, to be utilized, a fee to move it. So, David Martin, our buildings and grounds supervisor, he contacted the safe company to see if we could do a swap for something new, and they informed us that if we could sell it, we would be lucky to get $25. And we couldn't dispose of it, because it's so old that some of the things they lined the safe with cannot go in landfills anymore. They're considered hazardous waste. So, I'm very grateful to say that we got $310 off of Auctions International for that safe. So...
And we didn't have to pay to move it, either.
That's correct. We had help from our contractors. Campus construction management helped move it, get it onto a cart, so they could move it around. And the day after it closed, I didn't even have the okay from the Auctions International to release it, and the gentleman was on the phone with David anxious to come get his safe. So, it was a win-win for everyone.
It was in the way.
Yeah.
Because we needed to do abatement, so...
Right. That's excellent.
Yeah, we're thrilled.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Approve accessing of steam cooker that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the South Bend Steam Cooker asset tag number A00068335, model GC2S, be declared access and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. All usable parts will be removed and used for the new unit. The rest will be scrapped rather than sold due to the liability associated with a pressure vessel having a leaky... leaking boiler.
Second, any questions or discussion?
I'm happy to tell you that we were able to, through competitive bid and off of New York State contract, get a new steamer for a 25% of the additional cost. The repairs would have been $15,000 for the old unit, and we were able to purchase the new one for $20,000.
Wow.
So, that is the main, major reason for the replacement, rather than the repair. We did check. We checked on how long the useful life is. 10 to 12 years. It was over 15 years old, so this district certainly got its money's worth out of that one, and we hope to have the same success with the new one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item Q, approve accessing of textbooks that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, textbooks from Eden Elementary that are out of date, no longer in use, and do not meet Common Core state standards, be accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second, questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item R, approve revised easement that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the revised grant of easement with Niagara Mohawk Power Corporation be approved.
Second, questions or discussion?
The only change on this easement from the one that you approved last month is an address change from 3,000 School View to 3,150 School View, since the easement really is located much more at the junior, senior high school than at the CoGen plant.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item S, approve revised 2017-18 school calendar that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the revised 2017-18 school calendar be approved.
Second, questions or discussion?
So, what's different on this calendar from the calendar that the board adopted and approved in the spring is an extra day, which is the last Wednesday in June. What we did this year is we had the students end their week on Tuesday, which allowed our elementary teachers and our GLP teachers some time for moving upstairs ceremonies, graduation ceremonies, moving their rooms. But we've all been informed by State Education Department that the raiding day, which is actually Friday of that week, cannot be used for elementary students. And so, we have to change what we've been doing. And so, the raiding day on Friday actually is considered a superintendent... I mean, it's actually considered an attendance day by state ed, but it cannot be used by elementary as that attendance day unless I call it a superintendent conference day. So, therefore, I need another day of school for students. So, the last full day for elementary will be that Wednesday in June. What it does change, though, is that that last day of school being a raiding day is there are no early releases for teachers that are sanctioned by the school district since we are gaining state aid K through 12.
Any other questions?
Is it correct on the calendar that went home?
I'll check.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item six, information and proposals, the business report.
Well, the first thing we're going to talk about is the Title II grant. In the past, there was a changeover in how the federal and state allocations were done, and districts were receiving in the past, even amongst them, what they considered inflated grant funding based on prior enrollment numbers. And what the decision was in the past, that there would be what was called a "hold harmless agreement." So, because your enrollment decreased, we did not see a decrease in funding. The federal government for the Title II program, which is for professional development and a class-reduction-sized teacher process, has been reduced for Eden, because the "hold harmless agreement" is going away. So, for the 17-18 school year, we received a 24% decrease... So, for the 17-18 school year, we received a 24% decrease in the funding of this grant. It went from $52,655 to $40,076. The future they cannot give me, I spoke with state ed, what would be our future implications. They said the only information they had was what they had released in their memo, which is as follows. The state will receive, and I can assume that it's a potential Eden will also receive, so this is how I'm doing my worst-case scenario budgeting. In 1819, there would be a 4.87% decrease in this grant. In 1920, a 5.08% decrease. In 2021, a 5.31% decrease. 2122, decrease of 5.69%. 2223, 6.03%. And 2324, a 6.4% decrease. That would total a decrease of the grant of $24,926 to this district over that time span, with the first $12,700 occurring in the 17-18 school year. So, what will have to happen to sustain those programs, we will have to find other areas of the budget to reduce so that we can maintain the programs if they are what is deemed as vital to the mission of this district by the superintendent and Board of Education.
You want her to repeat that, Jen?
No.
So, we're back to being super thrilled about the GEA money coming back to us.
Yes.
About getting some extra funding in the spring for state aid, to churning around and losing an extra $12,000 in Title II.
Right.
And then, over time, the total of $24,000, which is something that we get how often?
We get it, the grant is funded once a year, and it's one of those, we expend the money and then they replenish our funds afterwards.
So, in effect, it's a $24,000 loss to the district annually.
Correct.
Oh, total. Total.
Right.
Okay. Annually, though. Total annually, no?
No. It's only about $2,000 between, around $2,000 each year after this year.
Got it.
This year was a significant cut, but the only thing I can assume is that they will continue to cut us at the same percentages now because that hold harmless agreement is gone. So, we will, why we need professional development desperately for the new Common Core standards, the federal government is not willing to support it any longer. That being said, the other issue becomes with the Title I grant. In the past, school districts were required to have private schools that were located within their boundaries sign off on funds that they could utilize of that Title I grant, which is for academic improvement for reading and math. And so, districts that had a private school within their district were required to share that money with them. This year, we were informed that all districts are required, based on your students that are going to private schools, to offer that money for academic intervention services for math and reading. At this point in time, we only have one private school because Kelly has been looking, Kelly Morgan LaRosa has been looking very detailed, working with the private schools that we have students attending, and it's looking like our allocation percentage for that school will be around $976. We will have to find a way to, we can't give them the money directly, but to get them supports for their students that are at that private school that are eligible for that grant funding. So, again, it's another area that we're going to be losing some funding that would have gone directly to the Eden Central School District, but the theory behind it is that these are our students, and if that private school closed, we have to offer them the services so that if they come back, they're not far behind our students.
We can't send them the money directly.
Correct.
So, we have to send them...
They will tell us what they want to do. They have a couple options. One option is they can hire a consultant. $976 isn't very much. Or the district that they're already within can provide academic services, and we pay them.
Oh, so we can pay the district that they're within, okay.
Yes, if that's how they're getting their services for our students that are our residents. And then, I think we kind of have done a good job of talking about the reserves.
Yes.
So, unless you have questions. And then, I have sent a letter off to the New York State Department of Education, Transportation Department, requesting them to authorize the, us to purchase cameras for on all the buses. We do not currently have cameras on each and every school bus within the district. Coming into the district, I feel that it's a critical thing that we need to protect our students and our staff, and to be, allow the principals to be able to see what's going on on a bus that perhaps has just their driver on it, no adult monitoring. Because as we all know, everybody has their cell phones, but your cellphone is very limited. You only see the part of the cellphone that the person taking the picture wants you to see, and the bus cameras will allow us to see the entire area from multiple angles. So, by getting preauthorization from SED, what it means is we will purchase the cameras this year, and they will give us aid on those cameras in our funding next year. And our hope is to be able to use that aid to move forward with a new software that would be more user-friendly for our district, for the transportation.
So, just to clarify, this software is for the district to utilize in case there's a discipline issue or an injury on the school bus.
Correct.
So, let's, let's draw a distinction between that and our conversation yours in mind about moving forward and hoping to get GPS software for buses too. So, can you talk about that?
Yes, that will be the next step. I've decided to kind of phase it, and my hope is to first get these cameras because I feel the cameras are a safety issue. Not only that, I know in my past district, we were able to use cameras just by figuring out when they went and crossed certain streets to determine if the bus was actually speeding when someone complained. So, there's a lot of oversight uses for our district for the cameras. And then, what Sandy is talking about is she would like to have GPS so that we could offer software where the parents could see when the students are getting on and off the buses and where the bus is. So, in inclement weather, when the bus is 15 minutes late, the parents aren't calling the bus garage, they're logging onto the app, and they can see where their student bus is at that moment. The other side of it will be good. If the bus goes past their house, they will know it went past their house, and then they can call and raise the red flag, and the phones won't be busy with a parent who is just wondering why the bus is late. So, our goal is to get approval for the cameras. Then I will go back and ask if we can put GPSs on, and then the aid those will generate will pay for the software to run the new routing software and the GPS tracking software.
And the reason that I feel that that GPS is important for us is because truly, when a parent is concerned in bad weather, they can't get through to the bus garage because the bus garage is already on the phone with another parent. So, it's almost an impossibility for everyone to get comfort, to feel comfortable in those conditions. So, I think it's a good move. But you're going to phase that in after.
I'm going to phase those in so that everything will roll and be set up for July 1st.
I know last year, there was an incident, at least one incident on the bus, that the cameras were very helpful in a medical emergency slash...
That's true.
We're still trying to figure out what happened.
So, how many buses do you have cameras now?
Less than half, I know that. We're talking about, I believe the number was like 23 buses to be equipped with cameras is what we've sent up to SED. So, and there's approximately 30 buses, so... And the problem is, right now, what the bus garage does an excellent job for is if there's problems on bus A, they put a camera with bus, a bus with cameras in there, but that driver now has to drive a different bus. If we put cameras on all the buses, it won't matter which buses. If there's one out for service, everything will go seamless. And it has been my experience that students that believe that the cameras are working all the time are a little more studious than those that find the blind spots. And it's nothing more than a mischievous growing period that some of them go through.
It's amazing. Sometimes that growing period is quite, quite a long time.
Hundred and years.
Or decades in some adults' cases.
You good?
Yep.
Have any questions for Laura? Please, good? All right. So, under my report, I just wanted to thank you all for coming in for the Board of Education workshop. It was a visioning workshop. It, the administrators who came and also spoke certainly appreciated your time and your, your listening to their visions and districts for the gold, and they certainly were interested in listening to yours as well. One of the things that we did during that conversation was to take a look at the proposed district goals and add a couple to that. That was in your, your board superintendent memo. And so, I would just like to entertain some conversation regarding those proposed district goals and see if there's anything that you would like changed, or if you'd like to make a motion to adopt them. But he's okay?
Well, one thing we talked about in the meeting, the retreat, was to have, you know, coffee, you know, time with the Board of Education, whether it be in the morning, you know, once a month at, at the different schools, just, you know, something we're trying to reach out to everybody, saying, hey, we're, we're here to listen to you, and things along those lines, so we're looking to adopt that. I know Paul and I are going to be at the first day on...
Opening day?
Opening day, and hopefully continue that through the rest of the school year.
Great. Did we, I, we talked about incorporating into the goals too, the verbiage that just talks about, right, it's not opening for me. A broad, the broad, oh, here they are. When we talked about the skills that you need, just as a... Do you see it, Jen? Okay, full spectrum, okay. Do you want to just read it?
Okay, so the, it says to develop and implement, develop, implement, and it says a full spectrum of skills for success for all students pre-K through 12, so that they are college and career ready. And so, we just talked about skills in general that would help anybody, not just really specific academic skills, but, you know, problem-solving skills, social skills was like my biggest concern. I feel like...
Communication.
Communication.
Collaboration.
Things that kids seem to be falling by the wayside a little bit as technology becomes, no offense, but as it plays a more and more important role in the lives of these kids, I feel like certain skills for them, for me personally, are just kind of falling by the wayside. So, I'm glad that, that's in there.
It's funny that you say that because the problem-solving side of things, I had a sleepover at the house. I had six sophomores sleeping at my house on Friday, and...
God bless you.
They decided to try to set up a tent. And I'm like, you know, this is a perfect exercise for freshman academy. No directions, you figure it out.
That's right.
And it took a while.
In the dark? In the dark?
No, it was, it was in the light, but...
That's awesome.
Not at the time. I'm like, yeah, what happens if it rains now? They put the fly over the top, so...
That would be like a Camp Invention thing.
But it's, it's the whole problem-solving skills.
Yeah.
Figure it out.
So, part of that conversation too, since, since you brought that one up, is to, to, with some of the after-school opportunities, especially at the elementaries and GLP where they've been very, very scarce, is to open up opportunities for some of those clubs or advisorships. And, and Camp Invention certainly was one that, that our kids were excited about, Anne and Sarah were thrilled with it, so were other, other students. And so, there is a possibility during the school year that we could do some more of that in little mini camps during the school year. So, I would ask if you, if you're all right with the goals, the way they're written, if you, if someone would read a motion to adopt them. It's written at the top of there if you want it. If you could read my...
Okay, upon the recommend, so the motion to accept the proposed 2017-18 district goals, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Ed adopt the 2017-18 proposed district goals as presented.
Second. Any more comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried.
And we'll get those up on the website just as soon as I can. Then also, where am I? Under my report, I have written down the condition of Bligh Road, which is a county-owned road. I will send a folder around just for you to take a look at. I've been, it's been a request from a, a number of residents for me to address this with Mr. Polenkarz. This is about a mile stretch between Route 62 and Shattagie. I asked Mary Banco to take me for a ride on the bus, and it really is quite amazing how narrow that road is. If you've driven down it in a car, it's even worse than a bus because all of the sides have collapsed. And not just have the sides collapsed, but there's ditches on both sides that you can't see because the overgrowth of the vegetation is so high. And so, without that being cut down, you really don't know what you're driving into or stepping into if you had to go off the road because of a bicycle. You know, they race down that hill, some of our bicyclers do. And so, so, this is not the only county road in Eden that is of that condition. Certainly, our town roads are in much, much better condition, but this one being one of our bypasses over toward that end of our district is such a, such a hazard that I've been asked to write a letter to Mr. Polenkarz to address it. It also is a conversation point at the town council. That's all I have.
Okay. Item C, the board report, am I reading all those?
No, I'd ask that you don't because this has also been updated since this got pushed out, so that there are other items that are on for different months. We couldn't update it though because this went out last week. But what I would say is, is that this is an attempt by the administration to meet the vision of the board to make sure that, that you as board members hear directly from our teachers, our students, and our administrators at board meetings. And so, this is our attempt to bring our students and teachers forward to you all school year. And we will get that up on the website just as soon as it's finalized.
I think tonight with the Camp Invention...
That was awesome.
Perfect example, what we're looking for.
Wonderful.
Good.
Yeah, the positives and what's going in, the different buildings, what's going on in the different buildings.
Good.
Roundtable, anybody have anything for...
I would just like to mention that last night was the All Sports Booster Club 5K, which we have done for, I think it's something like 10 years I've been involved with for five, and I'd look around the room, and there's people here who ran it and brought desserts, and I was cooking corn the whole time, and we had more than 100 runners. The weather broke for us, so there was no tornadoes, there were no raindrops, and so it was, it was a solid turnout given the uncertainty of the weather.
We were texting back and forth over this weather of what to do, honestly.
Right. And then, when it came down to it, it was a little windy, but it was fine. And this year, in years past, the monies went to lacrosse and to track, but because this, the board now funds lacrosse, they pass on it, and Unified Sports will benefit from it. So, it was a, a great spirit there because of what the money was going for. And so, I'll defer to others if they want to speak about actually running it, but I'm told that the wind, running into the wind was quite...
62 was a little rough, running into the wind.
Did you run?
I did. And that was a, I didn't, I'm not a frequent enough runner. I mean, I can handle a 5K, but I, and I do that route, but when that wind hit on 62, I was like, holy cow, because that's the last leg of the run, and you're dying by that. Well, for I was. I have a 5K runner.
That was great.
And so, we had a, a lot of employees of the district there volunteering.
There was certainly a lot of parent volunteers involved with the booster club, and student athletes both running and volunteering, and so it was just a, just a great showing for Eden in general.
Whoever made those chocolate chip cookies...
To speak, I volunteer with the girls varsity swim team, and I know Shawna Cole, whose son spoke today for the Camp Invention. She's a special ed teacher here at the high school. She's the head coach, and she got a group of kids together dressed up like superheroes because I'm sure everybody knows Sarah Roberts' son is battling a brain tumor, and they finished and met at Dairy Queen because that's where Haley Brenner works, and they were all dressed up and had a nice team photo that they sent.
Haley Brenner is your student rep on the board.
Yeah. They sent a nice picture to Sarah Roberts, saying that it was for her son and stuff.
If you have that picture, I'll put it up on Twitter if it's appropriate.
Okay, sure. I'll send it to you.
I do have a quick question. I got some feedback about, or inquiries about the survey.
I got some feedback about, or inquiries about the survey and. So I sent an email off to the parent. I CC'd you on it, too? Oh, perfect. I haven't seen. So just simply stating that we have found that we have better, better response from parents when school's actually in session and so we weren't going to send it off during the summer. Okay. Okay. Perfect. You might want to speak about your dinner tonight, too. You and Jen? You can.
We are going to a dinner. Do you know what the presentation is this year?
So this is, yeah, no, I can't say that I do.
I didn't see what the presentation.
So it's at the columns in Elma. It's the invitation to the presidents and the vice presidents and the superintendents for the Erie County Association of School Boards so that you can meet all of the other super, principal presidents and vice presidents across Erie County that are in this. And I can't tell you, I can remember the presentation, but we can still talk about it the next time.
It was done by the two lawyers.
Yes.
On school law and it was very informative. They usually are very informative, current, what's going on in the education world. And so we hope to gain some information that we can share with the board.
I'm just trying to see if I can find it really quick. Yeah, I might be able to find it really quick. Um, go ahead, Jen. Oh, gosh, I just totally lost my train of thought. No, I think that was it. I only had the one thing, I think. Good.
Anybody else for the good?
Here, I have it. What I would tell you is that every day, no matter where I go, it could be a birthday party, I am asked if we're going to be ready for school. If we're going to have the place cleaned up in time for school. I started telling people, no, we're not going to, we're just going to leave it like this. And then I laugh. Gaping hole. And say that that's not really the case. Maybe you can read while I'm speaking. We promise you that the sidewalks will be into elementary school, it'll be amazing how fast they go down. We're actually going to put a little E on one of the sidewalk squares just to note that we are Eden and the parking lot is almost cleaned up. You can notice that the floors are getting waxed here. So we'll be ready and ready to go. It's not that far away. Really close. What are you going to do on the first day, Ellen? Because you're not going to be teaching. You're going to come see us. That's right. But you're going to come to opening day?
I can't.
Oh.
I have an appointment.
Well, good for you. Good for you. It's all right. We'll see you around on another day. Can you see it, Paul?
Yes, so the goals, we're going to hear about the goals and direction of the organization.
Oh, there you go.
So they're working on their goals and direction of that organization also. I don't know if you folks heard about that big fire in Hamburg?
Yeah.
That is Jeff Newreiter's house. Jeff Newreiter is a graduate from this district in, I'm going to guess now, in either '80 or '81. And it was a total loss.
That's rather horrific.
The realtor, I hear.
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes, and he still lives.
Randy?
Yeah, I know him.
My sister calls him Crandy.
Yeah, well, that might work. His parents still live on Woodside. His mother was also in the real estate and his father was in the bank. I believe they're associated with the Eden Association fundraising organization. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I don't know what's going to be done, but I suspect something will be in. I'll keep the district and board informed if we can do anything to help out because literally the house was a total loss.
You said there were 20 fired?
There, yes, it was, that night it was very warm and very humid and they had problems with firefighters getting overheated, so they called out multiple units. Upwards of 20 units came to fight that fire.
And plus that street is under construction. They've been digging at the end of the street. It's a dead-end street, very narrow.
Yeah, it's a very small street to get down. They had some water problems initially, exposure problems to houses next to it. Looks like that it started in the garage. Their cars are totally lost. I mean, they lost.
They lost everything.
Yeah, yeah, they lost everything, so. Yeah, that's what the water problem was initially. So, yeah.
This was in Hamburg?
Yeah, yeah.
So today, driving through Hamburg, they were doing all the fire hydrants?
Well, that's exactly, no, where they were doing it is where the water problem was, right there, as you enter Hamburg. And the street is right there, if you're going that way, right on the right.
They were letting them all loose today.
Yep, they were trying to fix in that problem. Okay, future dates.
I'm sorry. Regular, regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, September 20th, 2017 at 7:00 PM, Junior Senior High School Cafeteria. So if I could just interrupt you for a moment, Jen, 6 o'clock that night, there'll be a tour for the Board of Education throughout the entire district so that you can catch up as to the progress that we've made. And Young and Rising Campus will also be here that night to give you a presentation of not only where we've come from, from spring to summer, but also where they're heading into the fall and the winter.
We were supposed to have a meeting prior to that at 6 o'clock.
Yep, so you have a tour at 6 o'clock?
No.
Oh, no. Finance, we'll have, we'll have to look into that now.
We'll have to figure that conflict out. Okay. All right, item eight, anticipated executive session, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the history of a particular person.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.